That's a full time job. But that particular schedule and making sure we're keeping all the constituents happy and understanding what that schedule is. We're in dire need of both gym trades and algebra fields.
Can you flip?
So, the second area here would be for building trades. The current boardroom with the, um, the storage rooms in the back, utilizing that entire space in there. The advantage to me, um, when I looked at this with the, um, utilizing this for building trades because currently this is, um, towards the back of the building, there's an existing doorway here which in between these columns is eleven feet. So it could easily be converted into a garage door. And then same with entering into the central courtyard as well. So it would give them additional outdoor space, um, in addition to the actual classroom and lab space. Um, this currently, I was able to accommodate within this space, I was able to accommodate two classroom spaces. Had just over seven hundred square feet and then a lab space of thirty-five hundred square feet. And then also there's, um, there's two offices in this area which again, not sure utilizes those. Um, but one is in direct access to our boardroom, well, the hallway, there's a hallway here which I can show you.
And so I'm sorry, but Melissa, did you say you're not sure if offices are currently being utilized?
This one, this one I'm not sure. I don't know about, I don't know about either one of them. I didn't see any signs on those doors, so I'm not sure.
And Melissa, have you compared the square footage requirements with what the EEOE says?
Yes. All of my square footages are based on what the EEOE is reporting.
And, uh, for our building and trade classes right now, we don't have our class space for us.
It's, there is a lab space, but it's small.
It, it doesn't conform to the requirements that the EEOE.
I mean, the, it's, it's packed.
Oh, the, the.
And the classroom is very small.
So that we don't have space?
And lastly is, um, basically, um, this area here is the main hallway. We walk down through the boardroom. It's everything on the left of that hallway. So we currently, there's two conference rooms, actually three conference rooms in this area. Um, my idea was to basically centralize administration in one area. Um, and then entering through the secondary set of doors left of where we enter for the boardroom. Um, and then making that exclusively administration. Um, but coming down this main hallway to the boardroom, I was able to get two nurse classrooms, nurse aid classrooms, and two nurse aid labs, and then also two offices for the nursing teachers.
And those are used for what now?
Uh, mostly conference rooms.
So we do professional development there and whatever ten, three.
Hearings, uh, SOL testing, uh, of course, professional development training. There are years a lot more than we would anticipate.
What administration would be displaced by, by doing centralizing?
Um, I know there's, there's a couple that are over in here, um, but most of this is conference space. There's another hallway that kind of goes down through this area as well. Um, so I'm utilizing the hallway that's there, converting this one, so it's separated.
Would you have to take down the walls?
So all of these walls in this area are, um, removable walls. Um, there may be some structural walls in the office spaces that are there, um, whenever it is modified to add more administration.
And where you've got the administration offices, that will be sufficient for current administration?
I was able to accommodate, uh, I think it was fifteen or sixteen offices.
Thirty-five.
We have thirty-five offices?
We have thirty-five people that stretch in that area. Thirty-four.
So that wouldn't be affecting, so before, when you're coming down the ramp into, um, the boardroom, there's, um, HR's on the right, um, and there's another office on the left, um, and there's also storage that we found there as well. So again, depending on how we configure codes, if we need to, we can always get additional, um, office spaces. But again, we don't, the nurses' spaces, so there's tons of variations that could come from this depending on exactly what we need. Um, we could modify it. Um, does nurse aid teacher actually need an office space? We should have a full classroom. So there's, there's different things, so then I could gain two more offices. The other, um, scenario one here is if you walk down this hall and come to, I guess, kind of the end of the boardroom, and then there's a hallway to the left, utilizing that hallway, there's space to the right that I haven't put anything in. So yes, this area right here, there's nothing.
It's currently open?
Well, there, I believe there is some offices in there, so I'm not affecting that area. Um, going back the hall and then all the way to the end, um, on the left-hand side, I'm proposing that we do culinary arts. So I was able to get classroom and a lab space for them. And then also if needed, we can always, um, possibly utilize additional space, um, with that right corner, or expand it to hospital.
So we would create a kitchen?
If we needed to.
Where, where is the kitchen currently?
Oh, uh.
It's, it's in the front of the building. It's on the original, um, middle school.
Is it utilized now for head start?
Yes, ma'am. And they, and they, they feed the travel pest. And alternate.
So ultimately, if we could utilize that space for culinary, that we would have free, uh, all of the additional space right here. Which then could accommodate more office spaces.
So this plan would like add off, add culinary, add lab space for the ladies and expands both hospitality and nursing.
Yeah, because currently we only, we have two classrooms that share a lab space for nursing, I believe. And it's a small space.
Does that, I believe, that we were anticipating wanting to have?
Um, we're hoping to get JROTC out of that building. Hoping to eliminate, um, the front toward the colleges.
And Ag would just stay where it gets.
No, I would love, I, I would go with JROTC to go where Ag is. And Ag could kind of.
But if you choose this, Ag would just stay where it is?
Yes, ma'am.
And again, this is, my understanding, the limited areas. So we can get a master plan together and get a full written order CTE building. With the possibility of adding on a new high school campus, that would be combined with the high school. So this would be a five, ten-year plan.
So my ultimate goal, sorry, my ultimate goal of creating this is so that we can get these classrooms up and running quickly.
Next year.
I believe that we could have this completed, um, again, depending on the bidding process, but we could possibly have this ready for the next school year. So.
So you're talking in September?
Yes. And cost-wise, I think we are significantly less than what the original RRM designs came up with because they were utilizing the, um, the original part of the building, which was basically not roofed, the walls, they were brick wall, block walls for the most part, studs and so forth. So, um, those would, you know. So add to the cost if we're relocating those particular areas. Where this wouldn't impact as much because again, a lot of it is not structural.
So in reading the original RRM proposals, it seemed to me that a lot of the cost that they listed was because of infrastructure type things, electrical and sewer and, oh, that kind of thing is not so readily visible. So where do we stand with, like, electrical needs that we're doing? You know, just when I think of CTE, I'm thinking industrial trade type classrooms. And I've said, I've said it before, I mean, those are, these to me seem to be just more academic learning spaces and not industrial trade learning spaces. So maybe my vision is just off. I don't know.
So the, um, the, um, the electrical, which we did get a bid on that, or the gymnasium to upgrade that, I want to say it's a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and fifty, something like that. So upgrading the electrical for the automotive area?
And is that just something that just is there or does it require a new type of electrical modification throughout the rest of the building? Would it just be specifically?
So that was an upgrade specifically for this area.
So upgrade for electrical for auto?
What, what is, do you have any idea of an estimate? Again, I, I, I would freely agree with you that the RRM estimate of thirty million was excessive. And I think they look at a much larger, um, improvement than I think what we're. Do you have any?
So I don't have, I don't have any, I don't have any formal quotes. That was the only formal quote that I was given was the one for the electrical.
Well, I'm hearing, I'm hearing between, and again, it's rumors, it isn't even, so I'm just gonna ask. I'm hearing between five hundred thousand and three million.
Yeah, I've got estimates based on my drawings for one, one point five, two, three.
Okay. So the estimates, can you share where the estimates came from or?
Wouldn't quite five. It's not in writing, so I would rather not just list that.
Fair enough. So can I make a few assumptions to get you to know? A licensed contractor with probably a form of engineering background that some, in some things, okay.
And have, and have recently done one, one some person?
Okay, so has an idea of, you know, kind of, you know, what, what he's talking about. So you're, um, not on paper, is, you said one what?
One point five to three.
One point five to three, okay.
Again, just for that?
No, 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 that, that, yeah. No, the, the only thing that was for this was the electrical quote that I've got.
How do we get, how do, and I may have missed this part, on the automotive side, how do the young people get to the automotive side? Did I miss that part?
Well, we would need to bring access into this backside.
Okay. How are we getting, where is the access coming from?
So I would, I look at the property and if we follow the tree line, we wouldn't be affecting the football field or baseball.
So the backside of the property?
Coming in from the prospect area.
And that would be for the vehicles and the young people. Because the young people could only access it from the outside. They could not come through.
Correct, yeah.
And specifically just.
So if we were, if we were doing a, and again, I spoke about this briefly, but the logistics of it, it would be, um, how do, how do these students enter the building? Would we take a secondary vehicle, a bus to drop them off back there? Or would they walk towards and then go back to sideline and go to the right of the building instead of straight?
Um, and your cost estimate just for electrical, again, or you said, I think you already said, I heard it.
Yes, I, I can't remember. It's either a hundred and twenty.
I think it's got, it's probably got to be three phases.
There is three phases already.
Oh, there is three phases already. Okay, that's one. I was not aware of that.
It's, it's, I had it explained earlier, I can't explain it now, but it's basically, it's a higher voltage. Um, that would be usable for lifts.
Industrial, this is industrial.
Thank you. So most of the, uh, industrial buildings in Orange would have three phases.
Um, the, so we, we started the entire CTE process with a couple of pretty simple holes. That eliminates us on the high school. What does this do to a little bit of stress in the high school? What, what kind of, what, what kind of classroom space are we hoping to pick up?
So right now, we would open up the, um, classroom space where the nurses are. Um, there's two classrooms there plus a small area in between. Um, there, the classroom, at least one of them, I believe, is, is an extra large classroom, so we may be able to get three out of that space.
You're talking about the nurse's side?
The nurse, nurse aid.
Yeah, we could probably get two classrooms out of that one side, the other one's a claw, so definitely it would be good for an office or anything.
So depending on what we have to look at there, there may be some reconfiguring in that space. But we could definitely at least get two possibly.
Yep.
Um, and then the, uh, building trades area, which the, the one part of it would be big enough for a classroom. Um, and then there's, uh, and there's some office spaces next to it, so again, possibly one in that area. So I've created four, three, four, five, five, four, five spaces. Um, ultimately, if, if we get five, that would get rid of the cottages in the front.
That was one.
Would get rid of the cottages in the front.
Yeah, I, we're gonna need to add that.
There's five.
I was struggling with, with the new planning process on the school. I was struggling trying to figure out the map to get rid of the cottages in the front. And that's double the size and picking up ten to twelve classrooms, which is almost two hundred, you know, kids. And I was still struggling to figure out how we were gonna do it, so.
Well, again, it all depends on what we choose to put in those new, those open spaces now. Whether it's the cottages, leave the cottages and we remove some other classrooms around. I know there are some teachers, um, that are still on the parts, um, but.
I mean, no one wants the cottages more than I, I mean, it was, it's just, I, I saw it. That being said, I don't want to tell the public that we're, you know, we're gonna do X because we're gonna remove this, and then we remove this and do X. And if you don't create any classroom space and we're still having to give us some capacity, and I'm gonna be sitting here on my own, so what did we just accomplish? I have the only thing.
In my opinion, uh, I, in my opinion, this would be a short term, which the metal building on the campus also is a short term. Because we know that we're facing a demographic crisis here coming soon. Um, this is no, this board is no longer supervisor board. Um, but decisions that we're making here are really catching up to us now.
Now, can you just keep down the road for a minute?
Right, absolutely. So I think this would give us the ability to offer new programs and expand our current programs to offer more required employee skills, time, and pricing recognition in the short term. To give us time to develop that, and, and how, especially our administration, who they are really looking at. Well, this is what we really want our schools to like, and we build that together as a team. Um, because I'll be honest with you, I haven't seen anyone that's serious about making changes in this network until the five thousandth season. Um, and so I know that we're all of us single, I know that we all have a desire to make positive change and some impact for those students and all. And so that's why I appreciate you today, just having the belief and to talk to you and have you have any questions. Uh, but I think this is just the most immediate, low-cost investment in not only just two hundred kids. Uh, but it also provides us the ability to have a long-range campaign, making, like, what's our goal? We can get some real data from our listeners, and we can see, is our campus even feasible to keep expanding on? Or is it not? Do we need to start having a large-scale plan and put that in place and get that training program?
Do we need to, I know that the master plan has been developed multiple.
Seven times.
Many years.
Well, the industry previous board did one for the high school, but it did not look. It was, in my opinion, I was on the board, in my opinion, as I looked at it, as the creative moved, it was extremely drawl, not answered very specific questions, but it did not have a holistic look at the entire county as well. It looked at a, the one specific thing about it was as it looked at the high school campus. And then it sprawled, and everybody's kind of going, I mean, how do we go from, how do we go from fifteen million to ninety million, um, you know, in one plant? Like, I mean, I remember when you were setting it, I'm scratching my head going, all right, why do we need ninety thousand square foot building? And that, and, I'm trying to go, I'm, I'm, I was trying to reach, but anyway. I mean, I agree with, I, I, I would say eighty percent of, of, of what you're saying. So, you know, to me, now the conversation goes, you know, one of two ways, in my opinion. I, I would like to finish the conversation about Melissa's proposal before we go to, um, a greater discussion, which is the master plan that's accepted.
But can I just, I mean, that's complicated, the division-wide master plan, which is specifically the high school.
I was thinking high school because that would impact kind of what mine would be. Uh, because if, if we can make the current campus work, then that's, that's gonna change a lot of my opinion. But if that campus is not suitable for where this county is gonna sit, and we already know that this county can't afford to face a climate like this. Uh, the, the, the tax base is not here to be for two administrations, two buildings, two sports leagues, two bands. You, you just.
The list goes on.
Yeah. So ultimately, I think we probably are all the same age, that we want to have a maximum, you know. Um, I know my end, Sandy, you're right, focus one a little bit closer, not a whole lot, but just a little bit. Um, and so I think that this would be a, a medium. Um, but with the growth title, of course, you have to be able to watch enough events unless you really get a lot of exercise legalized there. Um, the building is very old, it's.
We will be in the demographic on studies. And that's still. What you're talking about, with, with the third thousand, yeah, that's what happened to the JINs, JINs, and Fashions.
Ten, we're picking up ten, we're picking up. Ten to twelve classrooms.
Ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve classrooms, which is a little over two hundred students, and by the demographic report from the local computer, uh, rises between five and eight hundred.
Okay.
And it wrote that the high school, it does not address, to Justice's point, it does not address the eastern part of the county. Which is a complete and completely different conversation than, than the high school issue. Because we're at ninety-eight percent capacity at high school, and then there are schools in y'all's districts that are horrible. I mean, we saw some of the numbers. I think a few of the kids during classes are two children away from us being out of compliance. And we do not, and we do not have space for to create what we have to come to train.
And we know when the trailers come in, they, it's impossible to get.
The more that what the trailers, the conversation was as simple as this, it's temporary.
Nineteen seventy-two, we could class size reduction and power, and that, and it's, it's all just company, it's the whole state. Look, I'm wondering if, because we know that we're facing that, we need to be a hundred and twelve, and that's going to be a major. It's, that's something we're probably able to achieve. So if, if that must be the focus of the master plan in the short term, and then the high school's gonna have to get fixed down the road as those kinds of trip related, um, to the second phase, the third phase of the master plan.
But I think that's why we saved the ten million dollars that we have to use on play that foundation and then building. And then filling it with success and including getting the lifts, getting in working, and that. So if we could save that and put that towards whether the written order, larger steel CTE facility that can hold more students and be a baseline for the new high school, that would give us more time where we can save up for several years to be able to afford the ninety million dollar comp.
And it's not gonna be saving, but we're gonna end up having to go out to a bond and probably be a multiple series bond. As you guys are talking, phase this, phase that. So, I mean, there's no way that we can come up with the money to go to the new high school. Even if it's like ten bucks, ten years, we could put somewhere, but, you know, to achieve what we're gonna have to achieve, taking into consideration the cost of living and the cost of everything that's gonna increase.
And then not even thinking about, you know, the primary district, well, they are on L, that's why they weren't prepared by the larger prices on the rent. Um, but that's gonna be a major loophole, even if we do just in addition to both of the schools that are combining to one larger school or having two larger elementary, primary schools. Um, I don't really think that would stand the amount of usage. That's another point to think about while we're going through this, it's not just. I, I just have far too much for departmentalizing, because I mean, we need to look at some of this, and I'm like, we've got eighteen different players, how do we?
I, I, I don't, I'm not suggesting of doing departmentalizing. I, I, I'm not, that's not my suggestion. My, my suggestion is, when, when you do departmentalizing, you have specific conversations about what you're trying to do in, let's say it's three budgets. But then it comes to a point of having the broader conversation of, all right, what is the future, what? I, I don't disagree with that. Um, the only, you know, I, I, you know, I would say to Darrell, the only point, you know, maybe the conversations just needs to move there unless Melissa has anything else she wants to add, uh, specific about that one.
No, I mean, um, I have plans, I have big plans to proceed with, actually, getting that space.
Um, did you check, Melissa, we came on, um, all of the, the rest of the rooms and. Her, her, right, so that's, that should be maybe able to align us in a lot of relationships.
Yeah, in fact, we could even approach some things to bring us back up to eighty, I don't know, I don't know if it was, it's not too. With, uh, ramps or something.
Yeah.
We've had to make some improvements over the years, and that's another thing that is in the building, most of the work to bring in and ensure that people remain compliant.
And, and I have, just curious, I have a question, we walk up that bar, so if you, you walk in the front door, you turn left towards regardless, and, and there's that hallway that goes down, and if that's where administration is going to be sort of, you know, the hall. Are there the restrooms on that side? Or do we go in and out?
Only, the only difference between that side of the building are the, the one in mine, the flat one on the center side. Please see.
Do you guys currently use other portions of the building to, because I know there's like a break.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's a break. Uh, like a couple, uh, couple doors up there for.
So I know on the, we have this, on the best dark side of the, 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 the area, you would have, you know, two, two ones, I think, yeah, C gate, there's two of them. Yeah, but then there's single stall, um, still, a couple of offices.
So one, they're in, that one off, that is, you know, the pass, the one room, which is another set.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's restrooms back here and restrooms that we use right now.
Give me context.
We'd like to. This is, this is the main, like, the main hallway.
Hall, okay.
This is the boardroom, so we have restrooms at the beginning, at the beginning, and then further down the hall is also restroom.
So then just keep walking past, clean stalls here.
Okay. Yes, there's, there's basically a set of the, I think it's kind of like, right in here, maybe, or right here.
Yeah, I should say in a word, but.
So it looks like too, if you go to the old plan, there was, there, the, these two areas right here. There's signs left, so there should be water, there's somewhere in there.
Right.
Um, so again, expanding, I think that's probably where the government of the water came from, was in there. So again, you have this space here, if we can access water, um, figure out how to have another set back. So again, you have this space here, if we can access water, um, figure out how to have that set back. But ultimately, the space is there, is really what it boils down to.
I would really, would help me to have like a list of what programs and what classes or programs within this proposal would be impacted, and whatever, what agency or program to have to relocate, both either outside of current TAC or within TAC, just so I can.
Not, so, so for example.
So we're creating, creating an automotive, so that would be a brand new, that's, creating that. Relocating building trades. That is freeing up classroom space, um, in the basement on the backside of the high school.
Free up.
Freeing up the building trade area. That would free, that would free the other classroom space. We might have to do a little bit of it, but I don't think it would be, oh, I, I would have done. Um, relocating nursing, which would free up two, um, potentially, classroom spaces.
Okay.
And then culinary, there.
We don't have. Yes, one more.
You said one more.
It's a different one.
No, it's not, that's. So we.
She calls it.
Culinary.
Okay, so new program.
So two, three, and expanding three.
What's the third one, that auto and culinary?
Building trades, nursing, what else? Culinary.
I believe that's family and consumer science.
I still have a, your culinary.
That's when it's called.
But that would remain, it's got a whole different.
They're saying building trades.
That's another.
They're saying.
So within this proposal, we're.
Cosmetology.
See. This is not.
Tell me to this guy.
So, one of the questions I get a lot is what, what actual certifications are in place? Is it scheduled to be? I asked him, um, about, you know, what occurred, what happened. And she sent me a document of four certifications. But it seems like her certifications, for the most part, are workplace readiness.
I know we do IRMS, but that's also all campus.
So all campus, and then the one that she sent me, A S E number one, two, that we lost, that was, and then.
Cause they left.
Right. And then Microsoft's workplace readiness, comp T I A for this, or security.
Those are all the certifications?
Yeah, but, but the biggest part of them are hyphen one, a little bit, anyway.
A lot of them, if you ask, you say workplace readiness, rather than nursing.
And, well, there's an ASVAC for, uh, J R C, the other category.
But a lot of those, you still are going to require secondary certification, every other secondary.
So, what I don't like, our community is telling us is we want like an A S E certification of, 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 or, I don't know, up to date, all those certifications.
Uh, electrician, uh, certification, electrician. We want a janitors certification for plumbing. We want a janitors, um, certificate for H V A C. Um, we want the other proposal creates the space for those programs to contend in the certifications.
And this does not, this, this will let the, on school locations, be inefficient, it will be correct, anything else.
At the high school, I was looking at it and trying to think of that. If we pull all of the colleges out and put that in the building. Cosmetology moves in any building. Got four bathrooms, twenty-one, twenty-two. And building trades, you're not gonna be able to get anything else in there.
And this is based on the.
We just work with it in departments or. So cosmetology, uh, or the quarter ones is about forty-five hundred, the fourth, the cosmetology is forty-nine hundred. For bathrooms, fourteen hundred, building trades, uh, ten thousand one hundred. And you can get one nurse in, uh, in there for fifty-seven, ten, and that gives you probably just another.
Yeah, but the building, like the, the building trade, it's not ten thousand. So, I think we haven't laid out, um, that, I don't know if the chair, uh, what, uh, the very broad idea of what would go there, but how that works.
That would be useful to have.
I didn't, I didn't ask that, uh, before we were first going to. So this was land and I understand, and I said it to y'all.
There we go, there it is.
And I asked why, I have a chair director, where he said, um, because this is just our company, and that's what we're, our actual numbers attached to, or isn't really a firm design, it's just, oh, we can do this, or we can do that, and do this. And then once we got to the point of a more solid foundation, and this is the direction to go, then, then a design.
This would give us.
Yeah, it's, no, 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 this, this is the steel building, the steel building.
Thank you, okay.
Is that any of the next, if it's the one, the other day?
Yesterday's, Monday.
So, when I added up the numbers again, if we're building something, why would we not go with the recommended square footage for those particular spaces? We're only limited ourselves. No, because if you add up the spaces that we have listed there, you can see the ones that have marked the red, they don't fit.
They, they don't fit based on.
Square footage versus thirty thousand square feet. So these classrooms here, there's no, there's no much space. If we go with the recommended square footage for each of these types of classrooms and lab spaces, we're at twenty-seven thousand something.
So what is the red? What is the, because if you're looking at the automotive, it says you require square footage, but thirty-six hundred, but it's like it's thirty-one, thirty-six.
Including the classroom space.
So that will.
Okay.
In addition to.
Yes, because this classroom should be this. And then this classroom for those two areas, so if we, per room, it's, we should not share a platform.
And these are all the same programs, nothing different than what we've been.
Another bad program here, the only thing that I was able to add in here was the, um, family consumer science, which is the culinary. Right, which is the culinary type thing, it's a smaller square footage.
That's the culinary, currently just add.
There's no technical.
Oh, that's right.
I mean, I feel like it's a science. Well, just the other.
So, I mean, we're using the word required, I think we need to use the word suggested.
Well, okay.
Yeah.
It does say required on the paper.
Well, it says, well, I mean, if it was required, we wouldn't be having building trades classroom now, because, I mean, we're six hundred square feet.
Agreed.
So, I mean, I think some of it, some of it is, while I don't disagree with you, and I think if we had a checkbook that we could live with voting on, I think we go to the suggested slash required, you know, which would double the square footage of the building, but we can only build what we can build for what we can afford.
But I still don't think this is a, because I think the prices are, even if it's total, it's a whole other price.
But I'm not gonna sit here and disagree with you. I mean, the vote, um, that I wanted to do, um, last week, all that was doing was authorizing, I think, the administration to get, and I, this is where you and I agree, I'm for a bill decision. I don't wanna hire an architect to tell us what's appropriate and then turn around and do it again. I'm for a bill decision, um, because I think that is a smart approach to it, and it's across, across the country. Uh, but the only thing the vote was doing was, um, being able to get some estimates on where should the buildings are, uh, you, you know. We have a number from the supervisors of what their willing is spent, if it comes back to over twenty hundred dollars, I'm gonna say, no, I don't want to get, I'm not voting for it, because we can't afford it. I mean, it's just as simple as that.
Where, you know, where that, where this is, but that they have is only eight million.
So they have, um, set aside, um, I can't tell you specifically where they put it, because I did not ask. Um, through the negotiations from our C I T, C I P committee, um, you know, where were the neighborhood rooms in that thirteen million? You know, they have set aside thirteen million for us to do this.
And they have. This is kind of a vast information, but I, I don't know. What I was told is that they did, they did have a tax impact.
There will be no tax impact. That was what Melissa will tell you, that was part of some of our conversations, there will be no tax impact.
Well, you know, we'll say a lot of things, and then.
Is there anybody who can, that, or whoever said that, right?
Well, I think when Dan comes back, Dan and Ted will, um, more will take that note and work with Ted and, and, you know, whether or not I can get on paper, I, I think insurance from the county administrative department need would be more than acceptable, uh, you, you know, because it's a lifelong resident of Orange County, I don't want to be part of a process that is not tackling a very large-scale problem by impacting taxes. I, I am a hump, we are on the same page, I do not want to be a part of that, and then when we start to talk about, you know, the eastern of the county, we will start to talk about tax impact. That will, more than likely, will be a tax impact, but we just haven't gotten one yet, we just haven't got to that stage yet.
But if we, for the, we went to the lesser of the two, and they can use the cost, they can use to offset, and, and, uh, they.
Something sounds like maybe the supervisors have already said, specs are in need of this money at this time, we have other uses.
Exactly. That's what we, Melissa, that's what Melissa and I were talking about.
My biggest concern is that it's, it's, that money is specifically tied to this two building, not CTE. It was, this is, we have the money for this building, and that's what we have the motive for.
So in the sense that they will look at this one particular option and nothing else is.
They have the one, they have the other options.
Well, I, I don't necessarily agree with that. I, I think we, there's been fifteen different options over the years.
Right, a lot of us.
Sure, but the previous board, y'all submitted some options that the three of us would look at on, and then we started the discussion as a new board, we moved forward and looked at a couple of, because you and I worked together on this, at a couple of different options. And then we came up with what we believe to be the best option, and, pardon me, had it, um, priced through, pardon me, R R M M. Which is used, the information that we already had. So, I understand, um, everyone's frustration from our part as well, but I understand the supervisor's frustration, like, they didn't develop this plan. Like, this plan wasn't theirs, like, I, like, no one called you or I and said, hey, I want thirty thousand square foot metal building up on the building. Like, I didn't get that phone call, I don't believe you got that phone call, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. Right, right, so, um, we went through, we had a, um, an outside individual, um, take, um, us to lunch, we all went to lunch, and then we visited Woodbury, um, who had this type of scale, um, it was much, much larger, and I think the ceiling height was about fifty.
Fifty was a ten.
Correct, fifty, it wasn't anything like this, but we had a, an outside person bring it together, um, you know, some of us on board, and then some of the supervisors together, where we walked through. Uh, and it seemed to make sense, so that kind of started the ball, this is our plan. No, I'm listening.
There was our information, it was, um, presented, not presented, it was information already installed prior to that meeting.
Okay, what is the information?
We only have samples of the steel building structure, we only have cost, all through the building match, um. Woodbury.
Okay. Who?
Frederick.
Yeah.
From this year, right?
That was in the meeting, and we were sitting at one of those, to discuss, we had samples.
That we had samples of what is still in the painting?
We had samples of what we would, we consider, still.
Cool.
So it was the prefab.
Correct. I, I, I am more than willing to share the, the other party's name, uh, he's a constituent within, and you all know him. That being said, he worked with this company before, which is a company out of Europe. Um, there was a sample of what the fabric looked like, and it was at, um, TAC, and I think some of them looked at, um, were not even. That was not what we considered, that particular sample.
So this person thought, and I think that he had, except, have you thought about this?
And that started the process to half the broader conversation. To Melissa's point, it was a tent, that, you know, it was a tent structure, um, and that sample was part of that tent structure as well. We appreciated the idea, but that, I think, all of us felt like that wasn't really the direction. That felt more like, like temporary, um, you know, solution than a permit, cor- correct me?
I think that was good consensus, yes.
Okay.
But there was a steel building in the survey prior to that meeting, that I was not aware of until that meeting.
Yeah.
So there was, there was information, and it was all about, if it was, if it was, try to, um, the community member agreements, to get it mentioned. In fact, I was only invited at the last minute to attend that, particularly, was that supposed to be a C I P committee? Or it was just, it was just an idea, as far as I can.
Dan, do you know anything about samples of steel buildings, that were provided? But I think that's, is that, do you know anything about that, talking about? Was, was it after the superintendent went over and had looked at that location to see if it was a building in the building?
As far as I know, we were, like, as far as I know, we, we looked at that building all at the same time.
Talking about Woodbury?
Woodbury.
Oh, yeah.
So, it wasn't technically, it wasn't technically a meeting, um, the constituent, the concerned party, um, he had made an invitation to people for lunch. He actually paid for lunch, um, and not all of the members of the C I P, C T E committee were there, because I believe, if I recall, Crystal was there, Keith was there, myself, Melissa, I know Dan was there, I think Ted was there. Um, so what, did it have all? In here, yes, yes, absolutely.
Guess what my try for your eyes was, did that maybe occur before or after the superintendent suggested that this location at the high school might work for some type of, of, of. Before, okay, so that's what you're saying, if they had, look, it's even before this discussion.
So did you look at the building instead of, okay, we're, just go.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe not, that's the order.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Welcome our president, uh. About timeline of how this metal building, the focus of our.
How did we come to, looking at that, let's say, should, how did we then come to considering metal building for that location? Combination on the.
Isn't that a, this is a, this is a very recent development?
Uh, yeah, within, within this calendar year.
Yeah, so the army meeting of, where it was March twenty second.
So Melissa had said that there was example building process that, I guess, someone engaged in. And I was just trying to, you know, set the record straight. That was example that was given by an outside party for us to look at. It wasn't a quote, it wasn't where we engaged with anyone, it was given by. Why should I show those to you guys and sit in my office? It's, it's a piece of wall this high. Correct. That Bill said, just so you know, you don't have to do. By, they make this. If you wanna do a temporary structure, they make this, it has foam or something in between, it's two pieces of that.
All I'm saying was that, I wasn't aware of that sample.
Maybe. Yeah, he gave it to me afterwards. Cause after we looked at some of the concerns, we're out of note, we really wanna do buying. As far as outside, he said, well, just so you know, there was another option he had. Brought in and said, here it is, so it's, it's the one that's sitting in my office.
But certainly that's how I was told, thinking about we were deciding that they had sent out their three million dollars. For the metal building, not necessarily the CTE, but they advised we're gonna have a toxic impact. So one of our questions, if we'd be able to see that on paper. Where, where's the point, cause in the budget, they've got eight million dollars on the side for CITC. So I was interested to know where, if their budget, they have, I know it's their budget, we're kind of spending it. So I wanted to see if their building, if they could hit us, where this came from and how we can change, there is a toxic impact on this decision.
And I just said to Chelsea, I don't necessarily know if we're gonna be so presumptive to ask for something in writing from the supervisors. But I think a conversation with you and Ted, and Ted's assurance of those things, this money is set aside and too, it will not have a tax impact. I think is more than appropriate and acceptable. I feel like that we've already gotten that insurance, but.
Then, I would say that we're talking to supervisor and supervisor by that. His conversation is in the form of supervisors is getting ready to be looking at assessments. And they're even with that being very concerned of how they can adjust that so that there's no impact to the tax. To your assessment, the price will may go up, but maybe lower per dollar assessment to try to maintain the balance.
I think they're super aware, if they just went on, what sixty five cents or something? Astronomical last time. So if I could just kind of put something out there that's been troublesome to me is the. The narrative that I just buried, when this is a membership, that is a temporary, but fixed. And if I look all around us, there are metal buildings that are beautiful and are long term churches and buildings. Industries, all the buildings. And I, whichever way we go, I reject the notion that this is a temporary mandate on a program. Because it will, it will be built to last. And it's a, it's functionally able to use to remove many things down in the future. So I, I just, I'd like to speak to it, it's not, it's not a shame. I just think, and I'm gonna, and a few of the others except for Dr. Porter here, anytime I say it, I'm gonna.
First of all, why are we just looking at six or thirty thousand square feet? Is there a reason why we couldn't look at a second story there?
Ceiling height.
Ceiling?
Ceiling.
Okay, so just no way we can.
Sure, yeah, ceiling height and cost.
Ceiling and cost.
So, cause like the other two options are two story.
Good.
Right. I tell you, if you just map the place that was a location, and I can get cost, obviously, that's huge. I don't know how to more accept the story type of building. You said, did you just say thirty million? Did you say that?
No, the TAC, RRMM put a number of TAC.
No, I'm specifically talking about the thirty thousand square.
Thirteen.
Thirteen million. Sixteen ninety, I think.
Was there any?
Yes.
Was there any thought forward cost estimate if that building thirty thousand square foot building, it was a sixty thousand square foot building, two stories?
We would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of, I'm gonna go with, you're not doubling the cost, but you're gonna break twenty million.
It would probably, it would be similar to the nineteen million building with on that parking lot. It's still, it's still separate from that high school, but it's in a different.
Would that require some different modifications and changes in the product? Okay, so just, well, the only reason I'm asking is, if we are looking at this then, and if we are looking at a five to eight year timeframe. We really need to make a decision and start a second high school or central high school out. What are we gonna do with this thirty thousand square foot building? Could maintain and bust back out for it? And so, one of the things that I had been involved with the school divisions out in California, it's a great thing. I worked at a much larger school division, about fourteen thousand kids, eleven schools. And we had a centralized kitchen and we did home cooked meals. Every meal, every, every student, every site, centralized. So I had mentioned to Dan, well, if we're looking at this as, not necessarily a temporary, but a thing that could be. Used for a different purpose, once we're done with this piece, if we build a central high school, if that's the direction we're going. Could we not consider turning this building into a centralized kitchen and expanding our management programs?
Well, I mean, I, I, I think that's, you, number one, a terrific idea, let me just say that out loud. But, you know, we're having a difficult enough time determining a location and what we want to put in. That being said, you know, I think your more valid question is, let's say, let's do a hypothetical, we build a CTE building. And five years from now, something changes.
Right.
Do we trust that Dr. Hornick and the administration would be able to not, I'm gonna just, you know, lack of a better word. Awful ability, thirteen million of a building that we just did.
That's what I'm saying.
I, I think one of the approaches that I believe all of us have had, has continued to work on it. When you go with a four wall roof design, okay, so we're twenty, I wanna say twenty, we would be twenty something feet on the east. Twenty eight, I, I, I think somewhere in that particular neighborhood. So we had started our conversation, no, we don't have enough field capacity, we don't have enough capacity, space capacity. So do we, do we trust that the space would be utilized appropriately? I think that's my biggest selling point is why we do this. Because it will not be an interior design, will not be a permanent structure. Your four walls are gonna be a steel frame within metal roof. Whatever you wanna do inside, knock yourself out.
Yeah, so I've heard about if we ever get to this centralized high school idea on campus. That the current campus could then, the county could then use it like for one cent rectangle, they use it whatever. And this building would live itself well to whatever.
You're talking about adult school classes there?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think it's, I, I completely agree, I think it's a terrific question, I think we just need to go back to the simple point of. I, I agree with Chelsea's assessment of a master plan for the entire school division. So as I have conversations with people, and again, y'all all heard me say this, we do not have tax impact. Okay, we have to ask someone for the money, okay? Whether you like what they say or not, it's really irrelevant. It's really irrelevant what they said, whether you like it or not. Our task is to deal with reality and make the best possible decision that we can with the facts that we have. So I don't believe, and this is personal belief, that our county is large enough for two high schools and I don't believe we can. I think, you and I are.
Is that your vision too?
I, I don't. I do not believe that a centralized high school that, and I'm hearing numbers from one sixty to one ninety. Is going to be something that is going to be, something that is going to need to be addressed within the next decade. That is not a personal belief.
Do you believe if you will make these decisions, you don't?
I, I do not have a crystal ball. The only thing I can tell you is. Well, I mean, the only thing that we can do is, you know, you know, the three of us work together, we would, we asked for information on birth rates from Wellen Cooper. You know, so I, we look.
Did they get back to, I know you were gonna reach out about the development on top of root trees?
Yes, they said they think they could do it in January or February, I had that information for us.
But we know that the elementary problem is gonna get fixed. And so I don't think we can look at the high school problem yet.
Correct.
That gets fixed and then.
I was just trying to, you know, understand a little bit of where Chelsea was coming from, from the standpoint of. Why wouldn't we invest in a campus that may or may not be there in five years? I, I, I think that is intriguing about the question, I do. Well, the Cooper report for me bought us a ten to twelve year mark with an expansion of a CTE program, the building on campus. And a potential expansion of the front wing of the high school. Now, we can either agree that that is the right option, or disagree that that is not the right option. But if we can spend smart money from the standpoint of, we know we can't afford a hundred and sixty to two hundred million dollars. We know we can't figure that, okay, that's, okay, so how far does that go out? I, I don't know, the math dictates to us in the Wellen Cooper report, ten to twelve years. Can that change next year? Yes, it can. And again, I think our task is, we can only make decisions with the information that we have. The, you know, previous boards are paralyzed by what if, what if, what if? Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna disagree with you. What if, what if we had another boom on the eastern of the county, what if? Yeah, we'll, we'll tackle it together when that, when that situation occurs. And then we will make the best possible decision with the facts that we have at that particular time. You know, that's just kind of how I, you know, look at things and approach it. I don't do personal opinion, I do not see us abandoning the high school campus within the next decade. Could I be wrong? Yes, I could, you know. The numbers say, I think we're closer to being correct than not. But, you know, no one saw COVID coming, that, you know, I think the world happens, life happens. We can only do what we can do, so I think we need to kind of start from that idea, have a consensus that. A master plan that includes a centralized high school location is probably not something that we want to discuss. You know, without having a much larger school division plan, you know, moving forward, to your point. But for me, CTE is number one, your, the elementary school in your district, that is number two. I know Dr. Hornick has already started the process of looking at, you know, we touched on it on our last CTE CITC committee. Looked at some of the different options. The supervisors are very aware of what the issue is, they know what's coming, they know where the matter are and out. And these are the reasons why, these are the reasons why, there's nothing that we can do about it. So we've got to address those campuses, that specific campus actually. The only thing I would expand on that is, again, this is more for our movement, for our movement. And I have, you know, talked about this just briefly, you know, we're gonna do a union level. I mean, we got one school, it's got two hundred and ninety kids in it. And it costs us as much, if not more, than school that has only five hundred kids.
It's gonna be a fight, we have this year, this.
Sure, I mean, that's just tough, that's a tough one, but, you know, that's a big conversation. And that's a conversation that we're gonna need to have. Louisiana has five, four required custom students, we have five thousand students, they have six. They got the twenty million in the budget that needed, and we have three more schools, okay?
Is it a, is it a? Disposition? Just that sort of just started and.
Again, my, my personal opinion, the previous boards, and everybody knows how, especially the previous boards, as anybody said, they can approve this. As, they kicked the cane, they kicked the cane, nobody wanted to, you know, the big, the fight that exhausted. All of government and the community was the two new schools that got built. That was a battle. Like, I escorted a school board, there were two in front meetings during that period of time. Like it was that contentious, it was that bad, it was really bad.
I, I reached out to all those supervisors just to, just to chat, you know, get their, get their sense of it. There, as you said, they're aware of the need, it is going to be as one of the schools. And they have said to you, why, that they do not see a new high school campus, we can have a book for the next decade to fifteen to nineteen twenty. And one of them said to me, and I've, I've had a trouble with that, that for the years, all these years that we've talked about. We've let seeking the perfect become the enemy of good.
Yeah.
And so it's time to do, we're not trying to build a Taj Mahal. We want a functional building that will put these programs in place first, and it's that our community needs, that our society needs. And I would say, I love the work, but I don't think it's easy. And in terms of what Melissa's come up with, obviously the space is there, but my sticking point still is. Is that for the new per creative spot, would this kind of be good to go? And even back to the infrastructure question, this, the sewer system, the, you know, I just. Thought about all of those particulars. And again, from my educational standpoint, and from a conference I just attended here, the state. Secretary of Education, the president of the board, the vice president there, took presentations and. So wonderful ideas about thinking outside the box types of programs. I think charter schools, they're really good, I think charter schools, yeah. I think that's, I think she said. So it among the seeds to me, again, it's, we back to talking about displaced persons there, but I just. That whole could be purposeful, but underutilized space could be used for more traditional, like, type things. Not necessarily this.
And, and I mentioned that to you, if, if we had not, if we don't look at TAC, that's not the option. What can you do from an educational standpoint to utilize those things? Terms, I mean, there are so many schools, there are so many good schools. Right, oh yeah. So we have potential options to make sure that providing those opportunities for our students and still have some space at TAC.
So just my understanding is, are charter schools, there's, there's a huge fund of charter schools? And charter schools are very difficult. It could be specifically CTE as a charter. It could be any, so let charter schools have their whole. But it's still not a bus.
It is, it's, 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 it has its own school still. And it's, it's, I don't know, in Virginia, is a charter school then like approved through the school division and they're like the, the over.
There's two options. I, I have a. We, we want those, we combine districts.
Okay.
Centralized, that would be something that, I have like different factors. One has to be through the Virginia Department of Education, all the valuable education.
Division, yeah. And I have, I have, I have both with charter schools and helps charter schools get developed and put in place. But it sounds like it's the same type of structure they're talking about, so.
Anyway, that's a conversation for.
Yeah, but just, but again, that's part of my conversation, like, if we choose not to do this, how can we make sure we're not just leaving space open?
Could we not use them to develop what, or looking whatever's on the table right now?
That's what I would say. Say it again?
If there's resources available, could we not look at those resources should help develop whatever's on the table right now?
To take some of the cost. Yeah, the multiple.
Absolutely.
If we create a charter school specifically for CTE, um, I think the funding's there, interesting.
Well, I mean, I'm not moving any ideas. Here's kind of what I come up with, I'm just gonna piggyback it, put all my points in. Um, a little bit, so, you know, to me, the driving focus and the point of the discussion about CTE is relieving stress on high school, building behind a high school achieves that goal. Pick up anywhere from eight to, I think it's ten to twelve, but I'm gonna be conservative and say eight to ten. So we're looking at two to four fifty. This plan, um, you know, I think we said five, we read five. So we're looking at about a hundred. Um, the biggest problem is, is what are we gonna take? Is there underutilized space at T E? Yeah, sure. So now we're gonna take underutilized space, we're already at ninety-eight percent of the high school, now we're gonna go to ninety-eight percent at T E, and then what, drop back up to ninety percent? Um, and then, I, I, it, it, it doesn't seem to compute to me, um, that we would not keep, um, that kind of in our back pocket a little bit, um, and allow, you know, Dan in the administration. Like, I've heard some terrific ideas, it's, it's, as Darlene pointed out, you know, malted, the charter schools, that's the first I've heard of it, but I think Dan has some ideas. If we truly believe that it is underutilized space and we wanna maximize education, you know. Hey, Dr. Hornick, can you give us some ideas of, you know, I think that's kind of a no brainer, you know, type of question too. Um, you know, I, again, I will say thank you for, I'm gonna rip the Band-Aid off in a minute, just, just, just a second.
Sure.
Um, I do wanna thank you for putting it together. I, I do, I, I wanna say thank you for putting it together. I, I appreciate it. Have a better understanding of your thought process as you did it. As I told you from the first time we met, I'm going to push CTE. And whatever we decide for CTE is part as I possibly can push. I've said that to every single person in this room, and if not shy about sending it out right. So, um, we owe it to the young people of our community to get something done. Darlene will just hit the nail on the head, you know. Nothing is gonna be perfect. It's not gonna be perfect. It absolutely is not. But I, no.
I was gonna say, so that's our early, I think, I think that's a survival program?
Sure, sure. You know, I've heard a narrative over the last two days that they were kicking out those as well. So I know that that's not the case. And I think that narrative is incorrect. That relationship and, and what that program does for the families, um, in this community, you know, I, I don't know if I can articulate what, what they do. I, I really don't know if I can or will be able to give, you know, get to do it. You know, that being said, those type of things is, is, is why that, um, you know, on campus, alleviating stress on the high school, having a plan for the future, um, which I think we said or discussed right, right, right from the start. And there is a form of displacement in doing something in T E. I, I don't think anyone can argue that there is a form of displacement. Is someone getting kicked out? No. Is it a form of displacement? Yes, I think everybody can be analytically honest, um, about that particular statement, so.
I think they want to do this, they want to do this, because it really does create a schedule and transportation and walking marches and fun. And what Bryce said to me, I heard a conversation with him about it, was how much he would really love to have a team there all day instead of, you know, like the Cosmopolitan, just making out with you guys. And you guys are great, but you're not the high school teachers. So it's that community, that sense of community of, of our staff and our students. Try to utilize our resources to the max and not add in whatever we can afford. And I think ultimately, um, the plan is to get the Cosmopolitan. Right. So maybe we're to place other programs there than T E. A sense of community there, but still separate from, and I know it's just a hot word, but, you know, still separate from, you know, the pedagogics or the homeschool or the morning, you know, break of work, this and all the other teachers. Or whatever, you know, just community, this is a community that comes with meeting.
And, and we've been shown that by presentation from our principal and prospect heights, how they like really come together as that one community to make a difference, right?
It's a difficult thing to quantify, but having read the terrent, um, for probably half of my career, I can personally testify that it's difficult to be the person who comes and goes in the middle of the day, you don't gotta fit anything, you know, wear team spirit day stuff, which do you address? I mean, obviously, you know, there's a minor consideration, but it's a big deal, you're a teacher. And what part of the. But to be, to be legit, you're hearing Cosmopolitan's not coming on campus. And the trailer that colleges will be, as planned.
Is, is any Cosmopolitan?
Cosmopolitan's the same.
I hope not.
Okay, so you, that's.
I hope not.
I don't feel, I don't know if we have a spare footage.
Yeah, that's, that's just, you wanna talk about plans versus, this is just throwing just ideas.
I know, exactly.
Right, this is, this is, until somebody tells us what we can get in there, I'm not promising anything. But I would love to get Cosmopolitan.
Okay. And the talk is, is, I think, perhaps they could stay there, but we use more of the lab testing. Or was that in Africa?
No, no, that wasn't, so, um.
That they did not have classrooms, but they did.
When I'm, when I'm trying to be realistic about what could or could not give us this. I think there is a possibility that we could recover eight to ten classroom spaces. And that could potentially give us the ability to close down the colleges. But I don't know that we would want to do that immediately. We might want to, until, as you were saying, if we need to build off the front of the building sometime in the future, that's gonna give us the full relief that we would need.
Do we know what that costs?
No, I don't. What?
Brick and mortar, start building, three twenty-five minutes, seven hours.
Yeah, that's, cause we're going two-story, brick and mortar, steel, concrete, that's fast. So my thought is instead of, and again, I don't know this until we actually know, right, this is, this is some position, but it seems to me that maybe we wouldn't want to immediately parlay, parlay with the colleges and use them strategically for lower impact, uh, particularly to curb the traffic at four. And improve those people's work, separate midday, maybe people pull out testing, maybe reading specialists. You know, that's a well test out there, but do things like that, intention. Uh, so I don't know that we would immediately offwall, but I would certainly hope, and I certainly feel pretty confident that those five people wouldn't have to stay out there and teach social studies out there.
So what programs would we be bringing into this possibly?
I could see pretty much, uh, we have nursing, um, your bill trades. I could see pretty much, um. Hold on, hold on. Well, those would be new. Those are new programs.
Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The question, I, I understood the question.
You said exist, existent or new?
Eddie, I was trying to get an idea if we're going forward with this plan, what's going in? Cause I'd like to know, like, I think.
Oh, what's going in?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Faster. That was just, I have some questions that I have, is that, you know, what, what are we setting up? We gotta give them some based on all of the programs that we want them to try to fit in. And then they're going to come back and say, no, we can't do those programs because of the next. We have to give them startups. Um, and I don't know if I've truly finalized what that actually was like, each program, other than this plan here. But again, if we're, if we're basing this building off of adding programs and bringing our space, then let's not shoot ourselves in the foot and make them too small. Because if we have an explosion of kids to one being one program and we dump in another, now we have, now we're locked into something, now we have space already. So my recommendation is we're going to go, and that's why when I did the plan at T E, I used the word that needed required all the way. Square footage, so that I didn't outgrow it too big.
Right.
So again, and with thirty thousand square feet, with basically the programs that I utilized, other than color, the Cosmopolitan, we could, we could almost have the max starting classes for me, not a hell of a lot, we have all those additional classrooms.
So it sounds like we're not generating the working colleges and Cosmopolitan may or may not be.
It's not. That's what I'm saying, when I did those.
Right, right.
But when I took those plans and used the required work of the division for the. I don't have much space for that.
So when the RFP goes out and you say, this is what we want to put in here, what's up?
I think we gotta set up non-negotiables of programs that we want to add.
What, what are those non-negotiables?
Auto bill trades, color.
And bill trades, it encompasses. Because of those.
We would probably want, we would probably want at least three individual lab spaces to hold those programs.
That is, to me, what I hear the community is really for, is to do really. Those are certifications that young people will graduate for. And they'll go from making fifteen dollars an hour to fifty thousand a year with that certification if they walk out of that program. And we would still need to find that teacher again, if, if we gotta find that teacher. I mean, that's, you know, we're not, no one's promised a new token. There's still a lot of work to do, still a lot of hard work to do.
To, finding a teacher, does a teacher that teaches at H E C, running electrical, have to have a regular teaching credential to be also? No.
They, well, they will have a teaching credential, they can acquire it through a different method.
I think the state is pretty focused on trying to.
Technical professional license, what we would call.
Yeah, because those people are not the ones who are.
Correct.
Yeah. I guess the other, one of the other questions that I had is, so, and I spoke to some metal steel companies. And basically anytime that I put an angle on a steel building, it trip costly. Why was it an angle pad when we kept it straight, it should be less expensive? Be my question. Um, the other question, do we, if, if we're buying, again, if you buy direct from the manufacturer, you save a significant amount of cost. So are we considering purchasing the prefab building, because that's what we call it, from the manufacturer, or, or are we allowing the design builder to purchase this building and market off fifty percent?
Yeah, so.
I guess Dan, I don't think we're talking about a prefab, but we're talking about a pre-engineered. That'll lose two different things, I believe.
Yeah. So.
But at the same time, there would still be pre-engineered, we're still going to come and embed some structures. So it's a pre-engineered steel structure. And to me, prefab is very similar, the only difference is one centimeter of buildings in storage waiting to be shipped, the other one is being built to your specs, I understand, but it's still a kit, basically. It's vents and structurals, bolts, all that kind of stuff, and you purchase directly from the manufacturer.
Yeah, so, like, for me, the, the first part of the question was why is there's an angle? Um, that was just a layout. Um, I think if we get, you know, we put it out to bid and we get some cost estimates back, and the angle does exactly what you said, and then whomever bids on it says, well, y'all, y'all need to make it straight and turn it. You know, angle it, you know, turn the whole thing.
Okay. Not gonna problem.
But I, I'm telling you, if by putting the bend in, you increase the price. So why wouldn't we just consider a straight bed? The bend is based on.
Right, well, here, here's.
Yes.
One thing, when Art, Art and Timmons were looking at it, they were looking at the topography and said, might have to. Uh, I've heard the same thing from probably Saint John, who spoke to you, um, and asked Rob Burris about that. And he rejected that point, pretty much holds to it.
I agree with that, maybe actually.
Well, my, Melissa, my point to, to that particular one, so like, you and I have a five number board set up here with background experience in this area, right? I was not hired, I did not get elected with that experience.
Right, but saving costs is also a thing.
But, but.
So if I can find a way to do less intensive.
Sure, but don't you think through the process? So if we put on RFP and then some information comes back and you ask specific questions about call savings, call savings, that's the appropriate time to do that. Like, if you're giving ideas about something before we have any information, now, is that your right? Sure, it is, but you and I have, you know, again, I don't sit here and try to give my resume and my experience in my life. I know what I was elected to do, and I was elected for my judgment, looking at, uh, all of the information that we all have, making the best possible judgment with, I, I love Darlene's quote, with the North Star being education. Okay, so that's why I was elected. I wasn't elected because I know, I know it's true by faith. So do we need to take our experiences and apply it to become more efficient as a school board? I, I don't disagree, but it's not our job to do the plan. Our job is to ask questions about the plan.
But that gives, I have asked questions about T E. And I've asked the questions, what classes can we have a block on? They didn't, I've asked the questions, and I've got nothing. So again, I took it upon myself.
I'm glad you brought it up.
To prove, to prove that it will fit, and I have made this case for it. So again, if, if I'm asking the questions to get things, to get answers to, it's because I'm confident that it will fit. And if you're telling me that it won't, why can't you have one?
Sure, sure. So, um, I'm smiling, I want you to smile. I said before, you know, we're gonna rip the Band-Aid off, and that's why I'm here today, let's rip the Band-Aid off.
Can I rip it off?
Huh? You can rip the Band-Aid off.
Just make it fast. How slow.
So, did you have questions about T E? Yes. Were they answered? Yes. You didn't like the answer? Period. You didn't like the answer? You don't, you don't wanna hear that T E is not a viable option? And you really got offended when the supervisor, what they had said, it's not on the tape? That's a fact, those are facts.
I've never gotten a viable answer why. I've gotten excuses why, not a viable answer, so there's, there's two.
What you call an excuse, they call a, they call an answer. It, 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 again, because you don't like it, that doesn't move, that's not my answer. I, I, I'm gonna continue to go back to what I said before. I, I, I'm gonna continue to go back to what I said before, we are not taxing the core. We have to ask for money from people, okay? What they say matters. Now, should they do a better job and send it? I'll tell you, I would not disagree with you, I was in the same room. With you and I shared with everyone what that conversation looked like and, and, and I gave my personal opinion uh, uh, about some of that conversation. But at the end of the day, the North Pole is what? It's not my feelings, whether my feelings got hurt or not, you know, I need to get over it, you know what I mean? This is, this is what the reality is, this is what we have money for. This is what we told we can do and this is how much money you can spend. I think the argument of, or the narrative that is being forced fed to us is not intellectually honest, it's just our idea. Like we went to them.
It's not my idea, let's be clear. This is not my idea, but I'm gonna say it so, if they started calling me, I'll assess their questions.
Fair, fair. So, I, I, I think I wanna address that one point and then, you know, you know, point number two. You know, and again, a smile on my face, still have a smile on my face. Um, you're in a situation that the metal sample that's in Dan's office was somehow gone behind your back. That, that is what the insinuation was.
I, I'm certain that we discussed that at, at lunch.
But we did, but then when I, when, like I know you know how it came about because we've said in meetings and we've done the lunches and we've done all that stuff.
We have, we have.
But that specific example came from a constituent, come from a contractor.
That's not your, that's entirely to be possibly true, I, that I'm not, I'm arguing with the fact that we walked into a tour, that it seemed like everyone else at the table had an idea of what was being presented and why, that I did not have any knowledge of, that's all I'm saying. So we, we, we discussed talks, we discussed things at that meeting, so there had to be conversations that had been before that.
Yeah.
That, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to.
I think we should have had this in like February. So we could have talked about everything before it was the CIP. So that way, well, it was a represent on behalf of the whole, I think would have been.
I think that's one of our process problems that we will address later is that you two are committed and the three of us as far as I know had no clue that you're going to be able to ever off the table. So it would, it would be helpful.
As I can report, we should have had more feedback information.
Minutes taken and just weeks of chairs.
But it's like twenty twenty.
But it is.
At the same time, with, when you're told it's off to you, it's not why. But if those things and ask programs and ask states, I think that's also a good thing, I think that it's, it does work, it can work, it just doesn't matter what do we want the long term plan, and that's what I have when I get the master plan. Where are we building this? Are we going to keep the high school? We're gonna expand? Now I'm hearing that there's talk of building on the front of school, that's huge. I don't know.
That's from your boards, um, or all in.
That's where, no, what I'm saying, like, that's, that's a consideration, like, we're gonna start with this and possibly ask about the school, I didn't know that.
I'm just referring to the plan that y'all asked them to do, that was part of the plan.
It was only a question.
Correct.
Right.
I, I, all I was doing was referring to something in the past, we have not discussed, we, we have not had any discussion about it at all. The only two discussions have been CTE and the, um, your end of the county and the, uh, growth, those are the only discussions.
Well, yeah, I, but that's why I'm like, I, I need to know where, we were on a road here on work, we're going to work, we got two decisions. Are we going to go this way? Are we going to go that way? And I need to know what the big picture, what the end picture looks like, so I know, I need to know when to turn right, where I can turn into eighteen different. That goes to the guy in front, I think that's why I see breaking up, like, what's the end? And what's end, what do we look at all the time?
But we're hoping, but no one can give you the answer with a hundred percent certainty, no one can.
But if we have an idea and this is our world that we're working up with, making kind of know what the big pictures will look like or what we want to do.
So the collaboration with supervisors and some of the conversations that we've all had, the consensus, and again, consensus, uh, has been, we're trying to buy ten to fifteen years of that high school campus. That is the consensus, because we can afford whatever, whatever occurs for, for our, for our annual school. So if, if, if that is the consensus overall between collaboration between the two boards, I'm not saying that that is our consensus. Maybe that's something that we need to discuss here today as well.
Because it's not like that's gonna impact my decision. I think that if, if there's no high school, then obviously we're not gonna realize the pricing, but if we're gonna do that, I don't want it to be peaceful, I don't want additional buildings on, on the campus that look to look like more in the middle of the campus. Uh, but if that's a short-term solution, what's the legal cost that doesn't get us in, get maximum effect on our students and our pets? Get, get down the most recent that we can throw around and, and get a plan together to know what we can say, what we can best, what we can do. We make homework. So I, that's why, looking at this thing, like, four million dollars, fourteen million dollars, that's a big, big gap in our face with forty million dollar warrant. Have we offset that and still buy?
It's, it's, I mean, you definitely have to use the cost as a basis to take into consideration. But eventually we can have eight to ten to twelve years plus on the campus. And we're looking at the current positives versus negatives. Um, doing it at the high school provides us more positives as less disruption to our high school students, less, no disruption now to the girls up in the end of the programs we're there. We can't add up twenty four years forward, start looking at how many we have in space. And we've also talked about with this thirty thousand square foot building, that at a point in time when we move towards essential location, if that occurs, then this could be repurposed for something else, right? So we're, we're being responsible and expecting our taxpayers, but we're not just telling them that they're, they're walking away from it for five years. And then of course, you know.
Which I would not be for, and I don't think anybody said it at the table before. When you put up a building and then, you know, Dan comes to us in two years and says, hey, I don't know what the hell you want me to do with it, but that's not an option. Absolutely, completely, yeah, not an option.
Not a growth of this thing.
I had, I had, I had two points, great, great pivots. I thought this, great pivot, great pivot, I had two things. So the, I took it as an insinuation that something was done behind your back.
I did too.
Right. That is not true. I would always ask, and you and I have had these conversations face to face, if you're mad at Jack or you think Jack's not telling you the truth, you will be jacking at that, just straight like that.
And we had the conversation.
Yes. But yeah, we had the conversation and we revisited it today, um, and things that occurred since then. So while I appreciate what we've done, if that, if, I'm a big boy, I can handle things. So you engaged in a TAC design without my, I had no idea. You engaged with, uh, and I asked you, and you, uh, did not want to say it, but we established, um, some kind of building experience, architect's engineer experience, right? So you engaged with that and got some cost estimates, like this is the first I've seen them. So if I am done.
To be fair, that was taken out of the rating.
I'm, to be fair, it's for being put into audit category, clear, all I had was. To be fair, the first day we met in December last year, that was one of the statements that he wanted to trust TAC, so. It's been out there somewhere.
But, oh, great.
Yeah, um, I have to remove Jack that this board as a whole board, um, did not authorize, or we could have a conversation, or it goes up or it goes down, but we were. Yes, that's me, I didn't. Um, yeah, so.
Do you want me to say take him out loud?
Damn, damn. And I, yeah, I, I think that this is a good conversation that I also wish we would have had this a lot, really good. And mine, I'm going, going back every time, I'm trying to remind myself, go back, go back to where we started. What are the, regardless of cost or anything else, let's just, what are the impacts to our students? What are the impacts to, and I consider Boys and Girls Club, our students, they're our, they're our citizens, they're our, they're our students, um, not literally, but, so I'm thinking, again, there's no displacement of Boys and Girls Club that started anything else. We don't have to transport our students back to the ninth grade, that's my, my key to, to that. And I mentioned to you, that's what we need to take away from it. That's, that's taking time away from the instructional program, from the, I mean, I guess we can extend this field, but you still have a specific number of minutes you have to provide instructional thing, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so again, but there are pros and cons on both sides, but to me, the biggest piece is the pros available to our students at the high school, having a CTE program on campus, not having to be transported, not missing any educational time, not having to impact the programs at the TAC, but that being said, I guess with having asked, have you thought of any alternatives? That if for some reason the TAC was a final decision, how the relocations could be accomplished for these undergroups, I mean, we're just getting to allow.
So I, great point, so I, 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 my question was, what if I? Thinking, like, do I need to be raised?
No, if you would have came up with a plan.
So if I had gone behind your back and I told you, I told you what I was doing.
You can look at it that way. Did I look behind your back?
Tell me, how, how do you want me to?
I was trying to come up with a.
Wait, hold, hold on, wait, this is why I'm here. This is, this is, we're gonna get some of this stuff out, because I trust and protect all of you. I can sit up on that diet and, 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 and be a big mouth, and all of you, everyone in this room knows I'm a big mouth. I can do it, and I don't. I don't sit up there and try to, like, there is anybody in there. But we can't continue to go down this path where an insinuation is made that something was done behind the scenes and you were not aware of it, you're upset. But then it's pointed out that you did exactly what you would do someone off, and then you look at me and go, well, I can't control how you feel about it. I'm, I'm not asking you to control how you feel about it, I wanna know how you would feel about that, and how is that working on trust?
I think the difference, I don't mean to cut it, but I think the difference from a outside, but. That's why we're.
In our business, this is all our.
Well, yes, I.
But that goes back to the CIP.
The CIP, I think session, the CIP calls the other quarter, which hasn't had a leak because you can interpret whatever plans, whereas this was on here, I don't know that you consulted anybody on plan, I mean, you tried to get plans, I don't think they tried to maneuver to get, you know, oh, well, let me call up so-and-so and secure funding, but you're not just trying to.
That's what I did. No, I'm telling you, what my, I have said to every single one of you, every single time, there is a CIP, a CTE problem in this county. I'm gonna do everything I possibly can to take it moving forward. It has not been secret, I have not been quiet about it. But I have allowed the facts and the information to take us on path. Guiding principle, relieving stress in the high school, that was the guide, that was number one. Melissa will tell you, it's the first thing we talked about in my meeting, gotta relieve stress in the high school, got to. Gotta create new programs that have certifications. Number two, boom, boom, boom. We have a guiding principle of issues, priorities. That is what led us to where we are today. It is not Jack's plan, it is not Darlene's plan, it is not Dan's plan. What our priorities were led us to this path, and then every conversation that we had with opposing or, I shouldn't say opposing, other, um, localities that have CTE programs, every single one of them, to a man, Louise is the perfect example. They bought nine acres behind the middle school and it's still way close enough for them. They purchased ninety acres, still way close enough, they put them in the, they're putting in fifty thousand square foot ground on the high school. Every single one that we have spoken to, gotta be on campus, gotta be on that campus. What's the call, head director, first thing he said to me, I wish he talked campus. Very first thing he says, yep, nothing we can do about it, we are feeding multiple high schools. There wasn't really an option. So I, I don't, I understand, you know, exactly what you're saying. But it goes back to a little bit, and Darlene touched on this a little bit, where, you know, could I have done a better job communicating, maybe so, but. Right, right, but I, I, I truly believe, like, no one should have any question about Jack's drive into getting this thing home across the line. There shouldn't be any question at all. We'll use every resource that I have to get it across the line, no question about it. But I will be able to answer your question and anyone else's question. How did you get here? What are your guiding, what were the guiding principles? And it has been consistent, time after time after time. I sat here and told you, we put this thing out for bid and it comes in with more twenty million, I'm not voting for it, I'm not. Cause we can't afford it, we gotta back up, we gotta find something else, we gotta come up with another consensus. It is kicking the can down the road, but at least, at least we did something, we moved the ball forward a little bit, I love to get it across the goal line. Completely agree, love to get it across one more point, one, then, then go. So, when we had our meeting, um, Melissa and I stayed out there and, and, and had a meeting and she looked at me and said, Jack, I don't feel like I'm beating her. Having a good conversation. Jack, can you delay? No problem.
Delay it.
Do, I told you I was gonna push the boat up. And you asked to delay. And I, delay may be the wrong word, do you mind if, um, please correct me, we're gonna find the exact words. Can we dedicate a meeting, I think that was it, dedicate a meeting specifically to CTE and getting community involved? That was your request. That, that's what I'm talking about, the last CTE, CIP, yeah, the last we had.
I got that one going back.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
That's okay, I just checked.
She said to me, Jack, I don't feel like I'm, I'm, basically she, she needed more information. I said, I hear you loud and clear. She wanted to dedicate an entire meeting, I said, you have my full support. Completely agree. You did the whole thing, I didn't know a damn thing about it. I didn't know what you were gonna do, who was gonna do it, and other board members at this table said the exact same thing to me, I wish I'd wanted to do it. At some point, I heard both of you loud and clear when we got my support, that y'all felt ostracized, left out, um, not included in decisions. I heard you both loud and clear. You were becoming what you were fighting against, that's what you become. And I don't understand why, if I've done something that has upset you or you disagree with me, like you've called me, you picked up the phone and called me and go, Jack, can you watch, hey, what's that?
So if you'll go through, um, there's like a little overpass and you drive to test, um, where the Chinese test is. And you go all the way towards the back, you're around the south, and you take them first, right? Uh, and there's a, it's, you're literally going up a hill. Uh, and there's a, it's, you're literally going up a hill. You'll see the. You'll see, uh, the spa on a sign to your right. Yeah, go past the spa, you're going turning to the right for the spa. Oh, I think that's you. Yep, 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 right there, crack right there and then we'll meet you outside. Thank you.
Not a terrific second.
No, it does not. It doesn't though.
It, it drafted itself. Uh, and so I supported her in that, but I, there's been no.
I, I could be wrong, just to make you know, it's so, it'll be long, it's, it almost like every couple of times that they're debating, it's been put off again because of, I consider.
I, I don't think you have the ability to, to hash that out, like, in, in public. We, we totally never have. Talked about this really hasn't been on the day.
The biggest frustration is we really can't. To what I'd say, to that, I think one of that is we haven't been here as a board and from day one, there has been, um, not trustworthy, we have kind of been coming at it from different directions. And so I think that there's a little bit of frustration that, um, we haven't really been, at least to me, we haven't been able to come to that team where we can have agreements in our program that are respectful and taking a piece of each other's different positions because we each owe each other. I'm talking about me too. You know, we own what we want, we own what we, Rihanna, we own what our beliefs are and our history and our biases. Um, and we need to do what Jack says and do what Darlene says and this is our northern star and we have all three different ideas, so let's throw them all out there, let's have those conversations and then let's get back to the northern star. And, and what of those options is the best for that, for our students?
I think that would be fair, I think, as long as, the issue I think at hand is everybody needs to feel like they're involved and that they're heard. And I don't know that that's, that the key is probably what I'm finding is, uh, what we have gone there because we have to have the ability to kind of sit down.
Oh, would you have to?
No, it's.
Like you said at the other. It's finally time, we've worked together here, we've had our ups and downs, you know? We, we know kind of how each other works, now we need to get together and, and to do it.
Well, the commitment I made to all of y'all and I felt like everyone made the commitment was surprising. Anyway, so I had to apologize to Sam, you know, from Monday, she was quite upset and had a good reason maybe. She, I did not tell her I was pulling the boat on CTE. I didn't call her and tell her, um, that was on me. I apologized.
No, I don't, because I asked you, you would, but I did not call you and tell you that I had asked you.
Right.
And that's the difficulty with the open meeting laws is we have to individually call each one, one at a time. It's incredibly cumbersome. But it is what it is.
But, but just no surprises, like, I don't need to, you know, with you, if, you know, you, you know, you have, uh, I'll use Darla for example. She gets some questions about some of the insurance things. She'd get loose me and I, I knew about it. Oh, okay. And she went through the process, worked with Dan and some other people and got what she needed. Like, I was smiling at that. What I didn't want to happen is someone from the administration, maybe not Dan or someone else, or a insurance carrier calls and says, why are you guys questioning A, B, and C? And I'm going, uh, 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 yeah, you know what I mean? You know, some of it's just kind of professional courtesy. You know, my example for you is the lawyer. That's a big one for me. You reached out to the lawyer directly to write policy. If we had not discussed whether we needed policy or policy change, um, I'm gonna be very adamant about that. Um, I can sit here and look at every single one of you. You and I don't disagree on what you want to stand for, we don't, but I am not going to marginalize young people and go into.
Yeah, yeah. Policy goes into the next section.
Uh, but we're not talking about policy, we're talking about, she made a specific statement about, I don't believe they can give you an example of where I was not, um, you didn't say transparent, but you know what you said. So I'm not talking about policy, I'm using it as an example. Yeah, use it as an example. Yeah, I, I'm, you know, I, I'm, I have three children that have pre-grand children. One of my children comes to me and, and they have questions about who they are. That's my damn business. And I know we all agree, that's my business, that's not the school system's business, that's no one's business. It's not a teacher's business, it's my business, that's my child, my grandchild. But what I do expect from, you know, we don't cause my child to be sick without because they have a question about themselves. Let me deal with that as my thing.
Which again, goes back to why we need to have a policy process so that we're not fighting each other in a public place to try to do what's best for our students. And we may have to see how that looks, but I think we're, we're getting to where we can have this conversation.
Do I, do I?
More than we disagree on, so I really do see that.
Yes, at the core level, I really do.
Do I agree that the day is coming? I do. It will come and we won't need to make a statement. And we will, let's not force it. Um, that's an unforced error in causing attention, um, negatively to staff, administration, and kids.
Well, it's not in the attorney, she wasn't very certain. And again, it says about kids.
I talked to my parent, one of the parents yesterday called me and I was the first I ever listened to this.
But like, yeah.
We want to protect.
We should have.
I think one of the rest one thing before we close out, like, part of the meeting, so ultimately, are you putting the plans together? Yes, I did it in secret. My total involvement in it is basically I present a formal presentation, have costs available so that I'm not presenting something and then all move fifty different questions. I wanted to make sure that I got all the information to you and I'm sorry for not involving you, but I wanted to make sure that I had the information. It was, if it wasn't true, then I would trash it and we would move it further.
So let's ask, if you would have involved, if you were asking, would you have been involved?
Every time that she has come to me with a concern, as it's involved to our separate committee, she's come to me with a concern, I ask her, what do you want to do? She tells me and we find a compromise and we agreed before and I would have done exactly the same thing.
So goes back to the process of putting all of us in before any one of us makes a step.
So you asked.
Yeah, I think that's essentially going for the steps.
Thank you, thank you for what you said. I agree with you.
Pledge. Can we, real quickly before, like, next steps? Next steps, we'll, then if you're stuck, we go on the twenty, we can make a decision. Is that where we're at? I think we need to, I would like some information in regards to specifics of classrooms and lab space.
I agree with you. It's been a hundred times, building trades, auto, college, the rest of the stuff, we've got to see how much is there.
So those are the, the must-add.
Those are the must-add feel in our negotiations.
And are we, we'll have to go out before we get.
Yes, ma'am.
Hard or fast, day to day.
We, we would, well, we have a meeting scheduled Friday, we would need to vote on it. If we have a majority, then we would move forward. They would start to develop a plan. I think it's more than appropriate to say, I would like to see it before it goes out. I personally don't, you know, have a problem with it. Um, I don't, I know Dan's not gonna have a problem with it because basically all the information is already readily available and then put out, see what comes back and then go from there.
You all there, my friend? Is everybody like your schedule there?
We are, we are there. Students, students are.
Students are.
Yeah, so this is the one that we, we asked you to change so you could do reading.
So the teachers are in and staff is in, but no students?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, I couldn't remember, because I didn't, but that kind of all came up suddenly Monday night and then I was thinking, wait a minute, are we asking them to come in? On the day that's not even a day, but it is a day.
Yes, ma'am.
The day is a day, it's a real day.
Now you're gonna come up with something. But it is great.